That's why I put it first.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up again.
Eric has a transfer that he's doing this morning, so he's gonna email you guys later all of his before.
Okay.
But he did ask me to print this off, just to give you a little information of how Pacim Ed does their money. I mean, it's just something that he said. This is what I print out to show you what they made for the month. And it does break it down for insurance and some get an idea. So that's all I have except for a check from up there.
Jonathan Mulhera, $174.32.
And this is from small claims.
Small claims, $25.
Have any questions?
No. All right, again, good morning, everybody. Good news at Highway Department for the most part. Personnel, we're currently at the 15 full-time CBL drivers. So we have two open positions to fill, that's best we've been in a while. Currently, we have three part-time CBL drivers, two mechanics, and we have four people out mowing, and there's two open positions there. Under the grant status, we are going to open a bid today for the paving project on Range Road from 250 North to Total Road. The second call for community cross is open this month, and we're working on that. We have around 284,000 to apply for yet to get the full million. And the paving project on 700 East is 100% done. We had one or two small complaints about it drops off a little bit after the stone, but we're gonna go out and work on that. We have some still saying we could do that thing. One particular person does a very good job mowing alongside the road there, so we're gonna try to work with him, make it to his mower and still get in there. As far as equipment, we're still working on quotes for tractors and mowers. It's like pulling teeth. Nobody's got tractors telling me that, you know, we'd be likely to get it by this year, but some places aren't even giving me quotes because they don't have the tractors. They can get the mower decks, they're just having a hard time getting tractors. But we are still working on it, and we are shopping around for a new semi tractor. Current time. As far as bridges, all bridges have been swept, washed, and reeaten. The next step is we're gonna go out and crack seal all the bridges to make sure water's not seeping down in between the asphalt and the concrete. So, and then after that, we're gonna spray vegetation to make sure we get the fresh gel alongside the bridges. We're still trying to get the roads graded once a month. Road maintenance, currently, we got 6.75 miles of asphalt grappings laid with the paper that equates to over 6,000 tons of asphalt grappings that we've laid. We've completed over seven miles of chip seal so far this year, and we just started last week laying cold mud next to them. So currently, we're, today, we're out on 800 North between 800 and 900 East. So we're gonna be playing the cold mud for the next couple of weeks, and then we'll get into chip seal. The training, currently, there's nothing scheduled for July or August. In the solar projects, we're continuing to grade and patch for the Mammoth project. They did give us permission, we're gonna put seven to eight loads of stone down this week on 400 East and the intersection of 700 South. They're doing more work on the west side of 35 now, have not started putting any panels up yet. Next era, there are three culverts needing to be replaced, we're waiting to hear back from them. The estimated cost for material labor for the three culverts would be around 18,200. Just as a side note, next era, did sign a road use agreement with White County for 1.4 million in road.
We've already got a road use agreement in place with the next era.
Yes. We are working on the Coon's Lake requested that we do a traffic study.
Yes.
We have the information, we just, we gotta get it down. Talking to us, but next couple things.
Jimmy, did you get any new information or requests from Norfolk Southern about that railroad crossing?
No, I did talk to him. I was hoping he was gonna be on Zoom today. So as far as I know, the offer still is 60,000 plus the grant from Indax, which I don't know if that's gonna be the full 40,000 or not. I have talked to Steve Moriarty, who is the superintendent in Kazi Hospital County. He has closed the railroad crossing, and so he kind of talked me through that a little bit, and there are the grant that's available for that, he's dealt with that. So we could investigate that more.
It's right now, given the feedback we receive from the public, I'm inclined to make a motion to reject the request to close that crossing up to 25 South.
Second, second.
So this is for the community crossings matching grant 21-1 Range Road, the county with 300 South, the county with 250 more. This is for milestone contractors, North Inc. It's like we have a total bid amount. This includes the base bid and the alternatives, you can read all the figures for it. It's 2,176,000 even. And that's for the total base bid and the total alternatives. I think there were six alternatives. Second bid is from E and B Paving Inc. Okay, total bid, again, that's base bid and six alternatives, it's 1,978,245.33. And that's 1,978,245.33 base bid plus six alternatives. Last bid is from Reeve Wright, instruction. Total base bid, total bid, base bid plus six alternatives is 1,685,256.55. And that's 1,685,256.55.
Missus. A reason why I'm here today, we're requesting our agency some funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. A small stipend to assist us internally with the ever increasing cost of employee insurance coverages. We're really unable to budget appropriately. We have the money to cover it, but we keep due to increased insurance costs and things associated with that for full-time employees. And our decrease in our offender population, of course, during a pandemic, one and two, it's really putting a strain on our budget, so I'm here today. I discussed it with Rachel when we were submitting our budget, and I'm here today requesting, I guess, the commissioner's approval, the county's approval, to see if you would entertain, entertain some of the funding to give us from that plan.
Some dollar amount you'd like to request?
I had spoken, is this, I had spoken with Mr. Pearman from the county council.
He's sitting behind it, okay.
I had spoken with Mr. Pearman, and then I think the approximate request would be 7,000 dollars.
Okay. And we did talk about this budget in the future, I mean, this is a deficit that's caused by their, their revenue. And so we talked about future budgets, and, you know, their revenue should come back, you know, post-COVID, so this would qualify as a typical type of thing we would fund out of our budget. Felt like his request was a sound request.
Thank you, Mr. Pear.
Did you have an idea in mind of which, because we've already divided it up into general categories, which category this will be fall under?
Yeah, be lost revenue.
Lost revenue, okay. I need a spreadsheet of everything we've already decided to spend of our, because I'm starting to lose track now. Just because of the piecemeal way we're doing some of this stuff, but I'm comfortable with his request. I'll make a motion to approve, request of 7,000 dollars from the lost revenue funds.
Follows a favor.
That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Pear, I appreciate that. We'll move, thank you too, Mr. Pear.
Chris Clements.
Jim. I think we kind of discouraged in our discussions last week.
Okay, well, I have a sample. And maybe somewhere down the line, years to come, if there's a this is something to think about. Also, it'd be nice if we had a shed bigger than what we got out there. Since we had that small one, then we purchased it. It'd be nice if we had a shed. If we need it, we still gotta drive to the warehouse, bring it back, then take it back. So that's just.
Is that, is that the best place for a shed, a larger shed?
I'd have to check it out, that's the only place I can think of where we could go. This way, from the west side of the east, and just leave the door west side. But I'd have to check it out. That's just an idea, you know, and next person.
Sheriff, when you were in front of us asking for approval on new squad cars, you'd mentioned a truck you'd gotten from Dermo, you were planning on getting rid of.
Yeah, there's timeframes on those, we have to keep them a certain amount of time.
Right, so how soon would you be looking at getting rid of that?
I'd have to look, it's probably pretty close. Probably a couple of months.
I think that might be a good candidate for this request.
We had plans with those.
What were your plans?
We got another vehicle, another truck.
Well, when we get closer to
It's not, it's not four-wheel drive, it's a regular pickup.
His needs wouldn't necessitate a four-wheel drive. Yeah, so as we get closer to when you're planning on getting rid of those, we'll have another discussion on how to dispense and might, might be able to fill this need. Because at some point, yeah, you're, we're gonna need a county vehicle for the maintenance department to shovel things back and forth between the warehouse.
Like, so we got the, of course, you can't.
Yeah.
All right.
What we're ever gonna do with the property.
More says loose.
Are you talking about for a shed or for something to keep their equipment in?
That makes more sense.
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't have to worry about losing parking lot space.
Do you want him to get votes on something?
That's something we need to look on this year.
Well, I mean, if I'm working on it or whatever, it doesn't necessarily have to be. Yeah, car and a half, something like that. I mean, I know you could purchase the pre-built ones out there and you can move them wherever you want.
Even, even assembly yourself kits are pricey.
Next year, maybe.
Maybe, yeah, that's what I was saying, do we need to do this, this year, or can we wait until prices start coming down more than they have? And it's, I do like that idea, using that property over there. Someone must spend time investigating.
It would be nice. All right.
Thanks.
Thanks again, so we're here for a couple of things. First thing, wanted to run a recreation request by you guys from the 40,000, whatever is left of the 40,000 that was set aside for economic development purposes. And I think that we have Rachel cast out the request, and then we have catch some information to as kind of backup for that. One of the things that we're kind of interested in and not sure if the county would be in helping support this great news life partnership. There's a brochure there about their services, it is basically a regional way to get all kinds of information out kind of regionally. There's some, actually, I've got here a couple of pages of theirs from like, we get La Porte Economic Development, West Side County uses this tool mainly for like tourism, but economic development in La Porte County, or in La Porte and in Michigan City both use this platform to get information out about things going on. So we, we got a tutorial the other day from the lady who, oh, well, she's like the salesperson, and so she went over, we could actually, we were looking at a couple of different platforms. One that was the La Porte County platform, and the other is a more regional one from Balbo. So if this is something we do, it's basically an annual subscription. They will come with professional photographers, and they will give events that we have, whether they're events that promote tourism, economic development, any of the things that we're involved in during the year, and will just, just another way, a marketing tool. That was one of the things that in our contact with the county, you guys said, you know, work on your marketing, get your, those sorts of things up to date and in the public eyes. So that was one way that we were talking about doing that, that is a $5,500 annual partnership. And then a couple other items, the marketing materials, we do, we have reached out to Otis to get quote on some marketing materials, and then her parking lot sign it, so back in the day, we used to have a full sign out by the road that said Start County Economic Development, and when Edward Jones came in, they chopped our sign in half. So we would like to get a sign that has our whole name on it, and that's front and back on the Cristos Plaza sign. And then the last request, so it's for an office laptop, and since COVID started, and we do lots of Zoom meetings, either Mary or I bring our personal laptops into the office to hook up to Zoom in the conference room. We
I was there for the last one.
And it was, it was a kind of, it was a mess. So it would be great if we had our own laptop to be able to have Zoom meetings, we can take it on the road with us when we go for meetings offsite and that sort of thing. So those are our requests, and wanted to present that to the commissioners today, and perhaps the council later, depending on what you guys.
On this depiction on their website, they've got navigation buttons at the top, off of life or for your life, or to analyze. Do we get a button?
We, we would have sites on with what they're, what they are recommending, and actually, the lady we met with lives in North Judson, so she's very familiar with this area. We would have a presence on La Porte County Life and Northwest Indiana Life with what they're recommending, and it would be, they would come down and cover events, we would tell them what events we want them to cover with photography, with stories, and then we would have unrestricted use of that content, for instance, our prospectus and achievement lunch, and they would come and cover that. So it would save me crawling around in the floor with a camera. While Lisa is presenting, there would be somebody there actually taking care of that, so I could be more of a staff assistant in that role on that day. Nice, professional, high-quality, high-resolution photos, they would not hold any copyright to that, we could share it with anyone. For instance, if the leader needed our photos, we could hand them to them. And then they would also produce a story, Stark Tank, same kind of thing. If we have a groundbreaking or a ribbon cutting or something like that, we tell them where we want them to be. And that is part of the package, is so many articles, and we spread over both platforms. And then for free, they would run all of our community calendar type of things, and they would pop up into like 10 fun things to do in Northwest Indiana this weekend. The Bass Lake Festival is coming up, hey, come on out to Bass Lake, or the Knox Peppermint Parade, or the Mint Festival, or things like that, Spirit of Sand Year Festival is coming up. We just ship that to them, and it's no charge. Also, any original content we produce, any of our news releases and things like that, we send that to them, they include it on their site, they do not charge us for that. It's a great way for us to amplify our message. We are getting a lot of traction with media outlets outside of this area, and not to discount at all WKBI. We are getting a lot of traction with media outlets outside of this area and not to discount at all W K B I and Leader, we love them, they are wonderful partners to us. But the regional news in LaCrosse picks up a lot of our things, we're getting a lot of coverage in Northwest Indiana Times, Northwest Indiana Business Magazine, things like that. But this is something that is static, this is something and. One of the pages has their analytics, the website visits and social media following. This is something that people who live in this area who are looking for things to do and looking for information, seek this out. And then they also share our content on their social media to drive traffic back to our website, to our Facebook, to our Twitter feed. And just really help us to get the good news out there. And that is they specialize in good news, that's, that's it. And that is their platform and, you know, as someone with a background in news, I was a little skeptical of that because. People like the, the if it leads, it leads stuff, oh no, they get a lot, lot of traction from this, I think it would be. A great way to showcase Stark County and everything we have to offer. And it goes along too with our video we're producing, our live here, work here, play here. That would have a page on their site where people can see it and really, you know, really raise our profile considerably throughout the area and beyond.
This is an example from Polaski County, where does that fall on on their overall site?
They are, Polaski County is on the Northwest Indiana Life site, I can send you links to these, it was just hard to represent that in a meeting today. But Polaski County is on the Northwest Indiana Life site. If we wanted to be on all four, we could be, it's just, it's cost driven. But she recommended definitely the LaPorte County Life site due to our proximity to that. And also the Northwest Indiana site because it's so regional. But it would just be a really great way, especially with us being a staff of two people, to get, you know, some professional. PR type of help that would otherwise cost us a small fortune.
If I could just put my two cents in from the council side, cause I know this is gonna call up tonight. One of the things in your, in the commission and what you had done with the consultant was. The the thing that really drew out was that the Economic Development Foundation was trying to do too many things. Makes me a little nervous committing you through this to start doing things for tourism, which the CBC board already does things almost exactly like, which I think you're still on. Like, I don't know why you, like, the things we have faced with right now is getting employers to come here, but right now we're still trying to get people to fill jobs in.
Right.
Personally, I just, I I feel like everything that you're talking about here, we already do this through CBC, like, why wouldn't you partner with CBC to do this and ask them for the money? Or work with them on it, I mean, this just gives you another thing to be deluded with, which the consultants, that was their exact issue was that. That your organization was too delude and so, you know, the idea was become more succinct, so.
Well, if I, if I can, and that's a great point, Dave, if I can answer that, I'm actually going to suggest the CBC can do their own. Page on this site as well, ours would be more economic development driven. Where, for instance, an update on the solar projects, they could do that for us. They could come out and cover our Stark Tank event for us, our prospectus and achievement for us. Just the other stuff, like shipping them the community calendar things, that would take. You know, as much time as it takes to share a post on our Facebook.
Fifty five hundred is a lot of money and then you're talking about annually, so like, even if we committed to it now, how are you gonna pay for it next year? And we're not automatically gonna say we're gonna spend fifty five hundred dollars, I mean, we're a government organization.
Right, and we get.
We already fund two boards, we already fund two boards that have a pretty considerable amount of dollars that go towards. PR and marketing, you know, tourism, like, you know, like it'd be different if it was, you know, like. We support you for, you know, different functions that you have where you work with regional boards that bring in business, I mean, like, your focus is. It's an adjunct for you to work with CBC and all those.
Sure.
But to start trying to manage that from your office, I just, I feel like the council's gonna take issue with that.
You know, as far as, you know, all of that, they do post job postings as well and things like that.
I'm not disagreeing with that, it's just, so is work one, like, there are already all these other organizations, this is tax dollars. And again, like, we're halfway through on, you know, this forty thousand, I mean. Personally, I, the council's still concerned, like, our, our idea wasn't just to find place builders to do it, I'm not saying you would do that, I'm just saying. You already worked on so many things, like, why would you wanna start getting involved with tourism PR, like, it's just my two cents.
Okay, and this isn't all, from what I'm hearing, it's not all tourism.
No.
This is, from what I'm hearing, it's more. A PR extension for you and your, your organization's events and. Correct me if I'm wrong, their coverage, their, what they generate content wise, you can also use within that new website, we just. My hesitation is, I really don't think it's appropriate for us to be a subset of LaPorte County on this page. And. Given that we're in July, I think the six month, if we're going to do this, would be more appropriate than the twelve month.
Sure. And we also just, again, to Dave's point about the marketing funds, we do receive. Funding also from YipSCO, R E M C, Wabash Valley Power and Regional Development Corporation. For marketing efforts, so if the county would not want to fund this in the future, we do have other funding sources we could. We could use for, for something like that.
Government doesn't usually get involved with things that are perpetuated like that.
Sure. And understood, understood, we just wanted to bring this to your attention today and like I said, it's something I'm going to take to the CBC as well. Because the Stark County CBC wanted to have their own page and have. You know, spotlight on the Mint Festival, spotlight on the Bass Lake Festival, spotlight on the Yellowstone Trail Festival, things like that. They could do that through the CBC with the inkeeper tax.
Well, and I don't wanna perpetuate this because we'll talk about this tonight in the meeting, but again, the commissioners had also said. That they wanted the Economic Development Foundation to look for funding and grants and things like that, like. This would be something you could take to manufacturers and say, hey, like, we have eleven manufacturers, they need to be put five hundred bucks in.
Sure, and that's a great suggestion.
Not really, okay, with Dave on this. And definitely what you said too, that's a six month deal there. This guy comes every year too, this.
Hopefully, this will just be this year and then we'll figure it out on our own for next year.
That, if you would give us the six month jumpstart on this, I think we could find.
Kind of similar to how the state likes to fund things for a year and let the counties figure out how to fund it for the following years. But, yeah, I don't, I don't think the five thousand five hundred for this partnership is. Isn't acceptable.
We're already halfway through the year, so.
Sure, and then the year would start.
Yeah, I'm more inclined with twenty five hundred for one network, the Northwest Indiana Network.
And, you know, the LaPorte County Life is just the name of the site, but it's, it's not necessarily saying, oh, we are LaPorte. It's just, you know, people from LaPorte County are more inclined to look at LaPorte County Life. And geographically may be more inclined to come to Stark County for something than necessarily somebody in Lake County. But, you know, certainly respect what you're saying and honestly, I was surprised when she said LaPorte County Life, but she knows her product, so. But we can try a year with, or I'm sorry, try the six months with the Northwest Indiana Life. And, you know, I don't think it's out of the realm of consideration to say to our industry. Would you put some money into this as well?
We don't like the banners, what would those be used for then?
We have two, actually in our conference room, they're the full of banners that, that are there, that if we have something on the road, we take them to the job fairs, we take them to. Prospectus and Achievements. They're just outdated, all of our buildings that are listed are sold. And North Johnson no longer owns their short line railroad, so. It's updating the banners, it is. Note cards that we, like, thank you cards from the foundation, we need to send thank you cards, which we do a lot. We usually go to the dollar store and buy thank you cards, this way we're gonna get some printed material. To be able to send out with our logo on it for thank yous, things like that and what else? Yeah, because we already have letterhead and envelopes, we just don't have any thank you cards. The ones we had, had the downtown Knox address imprinted on them, so we're just trying to update that and just. Present ourselves a bit more professionally.
No, we really don't like the coffee mug ideas.
And again, those, that was a suggestion because. For instance, when we had the governor and everyone here in October, we had coffee mugs with our old logo on them. And we didn't want the governor and folks drinking from Styrofoam cups, so that's why we were looking at freshening those up. But if you don't want to fund that, we understand it.
How many, how many mugs you gonna give us for two hundred and twenty five bucks?
I believe that was. Two thousand twenty four. So, you know, for instance, during board meetings, if everyone wanted to drink from a coffee mug, we could do that rather than having, you know, paper or Styrofoam out. And just wash them in the back of the cabinet.
Yeah, we're not discussing anything else yet.
Yeah. And do the. Six months.
Yeah, six months, one network for twenty two thousand five hundred. What'd you come up with?
Fifty six, fifty one.
Thank you very much.
Second.
And then just a quick update, I'll try to make it quick. Congratulations, Mary, Mary was named as a finalist in the Intentional Women of Congress in Indiana. In the Up and Towing category in Economic Development, we will be attending that event at the end of September and congratulations. Next, I, we'd like to show a quick video, we received a grant, an Oprah grant to put this video together. Mark and Dave were part of our Rural Opportunities Zone Initiative Committee, we have worked through the process, we have a printed, printed material. That markets our opportunity zone and we put together this video to go along with it for investors looking to locate. And this is separate from the video that was previously funded, that is under production right now, so. Down town Chicago, only nine minutes away. Few regions have gotten such an unprecedented experience, but such easy access to a world-class urban center. Stark County's strengths include an unspoiled countryside of lakes, rivers and forested lands and are friendly and relaxed. Stark County is Indiana's crossroads to the east and west and a bridge to economic opportunity. Stark County government is excited to work with investors to help them maximize their investment in our opportunity zone. The main project we're envisioning in our opportunity zone is a three hundred and twenty acre, every industrial plant in the county. This site is shovel ready for water and soil and is also permit ready for direct access up to US thirty five. The north pole southern railroad east west main line track is adjacent to the Grand Canyon and is permit ready to long way of. This site is also infrastructure ready for investment.
One of Stark County's three incorporated municipalities lies in our opportunity zone, mile and town of Kansas. It's located just up to US thirty, and it's less than ten miles from Ansel College and Marion University.
Let residents enjoy rural living in a small, close knit community, the town is home to Stark County playgrounds and it's a hub of activity during the annual forage journey.
Recent construction fire station is next to Stark County playgrounds and town park, or walking trails to soon be added.
In August, the Yellowstone Trail Festival breaks Hamlet's history as a transportation board and work in the early gates of autumn and travel in the ghost of coast. Local officials still invited that pioneering spirit as they find creative ways to foster development and help the community prosper.
Given these great amenities, it's no surprise that Hamlet is experiencing a housing boom.
The Oregon Davis School Corporation is passionate about ensuring that every student experiences success with learning every day. We are committed to provide high-quality resources in all that we do. Our medicant staff provides high-level teaching skills and individual attention to our students. They can master new knowledge, tap their creativity and explore their potential in high-quality environment. Our schools offer rigorous academic courses, including numerous opportunities to excel in athletics, arts and academic teams and more. And our facilities are equipped with the latest in technology.
Federal state and local incentives are available in Stark County. Imagine the possibilities.
Thank you, so that was, that was a pretty cool piece that kind of highlights the Rural Opportunities Zone, which is a big area north of the. River here on thirty five goes all the way up to the south side of US thirty from LaPorte County to Marshall County, so we're working and. Working diligently to market that area for housing and for industrial development. Couple other things going on. A purchase agreement is in place to sell two acres of the fifty three acres that we own in the Knox Industrial Park. A local couple would like to construct a small machine shop and so we have sold them. Or we're in the process of selling them two acres of the land that we own there in fifty three acres for their project. They hope to break ground in October on that, so that's exciting, five jobs, but you know what, five jobs is five jobs, a local couple wants to. Invest in their hometown and, you know, eventually it could be more jobs, but high-tech precision machining type jobs. And it's located in the Tiff, yeah, and it's in the Tiff District in the city of Knox, so they could reap some benefits from that as well. Norton option to purchase is complete, I have reached out to Norton regarding the firewell. It is, since it's owned by the county, need the county's thoughts on. How to proceed with that, I mean, do you want Norton to take everything over from the county, I mean, the county owns the land that the firewall sits on, so maybe we need to have a discussion. With Norton to say, you guys just wanna take it over, it was put there for development, you guys are the only development there. And so, not sure what the county wants their part to be in the firewell moving forward.
What's, now that that purchase is complete, what, I think we need to look into what would be the negative. Impact on them if we stop maintaining it, because we were maintaining it because of. Our ownership of that one, now we don't own the one.
And I did tell them, this is basically what the county pays every year for the, the maintenance, the R E M C bill and so they're aware of. You know, about what it would cost them manually to take care of themselves, so. Assistant putting together a meeting with Norton, or you guys can talk to Norton, whatever he feels appropriate on that.
Set up a meeting. One of us and Norton.
Few other things, egg strategy, one of the sectors identified to fill gaps in, in this egg strategy is food grade warehousing. Which would include raw materials or finished product, given the geography of the six county egg strategy, which is all rural counties. It would be a good fit for industrial development here, we're looking at a couple of areas in Stark County. We're looking at a couple of areas in Stark County that would be ideal for this type of warehousing, including the former Cisco site, as well as State Road 10 and 421 Transportation Ford. Or if we are looking at North Judson is on board to try and extend industry to the west of North Judson, there could be opportunity there to extend the rails, a rails for across 10 on the west side of North Judson, which would be fantastic for industrial development with 10 and 421 right there. So we're working, working that angle. Prospect in North Judson, we met with a commercial broker who has a prospect looking at the Romanian acreage in the North Judson Industrial Park. That prospect is interested in bringing material in via rail and then trucking it to the industrial park. Bad thing is the, the truck route from the rail to the North Judson Industrial Park is not a very good truck route. It goes right through the town, right through a neighborhood. So looking at that and other prospects in North Judson as well. Manufacturers Day, Prospectus and Achievement Events. This year will be honoring our Industry of the Year. We normally give a Robert E. Hamilton Award. And then last year, we started Investor Industry of the Year. So we will plan to alternate those. This year will be a Industry of the Year. We had about four or five local industries that were nominated. And that announcement will be coming up soon, but that, those events will be the first week in October. Human Resource Roundtables, this is something that we used to do before COVID, and we are bringing those back tomorrow, starting. We'll host the first one bringing all area HR directors and departments in to talk about issues facing local industry. And because they're all very similar. Tomorrow, we will, well, Jim Hernandez, the new skilled director, will introduce himself and talk about the skill programs. We also will have Ed Burrow there from Purdue MEPP, who will discuss training opportunities through Purdue MEPP. They also work with like a local work one and can provide training dollars to industry to get their employees skilled up. We also will have a representative from the United Way of Northwest Indiana, and they are united right now at Stark County. So they will be at tomorrow's meeting. Those are, we'll probably try to do this quarterly, and they're usually at seven in the morning. And any of you are welcome to join us if you would like. Mary mentioned this. We are working on one more marketing video. And we did get a grant from the CBC to help with that video. And it was, I believe it was 3,000, and you guys put in 1,000, and then the CBC gave us the rest in a grant to pay for that video. So I hope that will be premiered. It's our Stark Tank event on September 17. Next era, to our knowledge, they, they plan to start Phase Two in our railroad country after harvest. Man, the solar is going well. We, Mary and I went out there with Don White probably a month ago, just to see what was going on, and that's moving along. Let's see, working on a hotel feasibility study because of the major needs for lodging in Stark County. Nice lodgings. Hotel will benefit the entire county. We'd like to ask county officials for letters of support. If you don't mind, from the commissioners and the council, that would be fantastic. We are trying to get funding for a feasibility study. There are several locations in Stark County that they will be looking at for a hotel. Biggest thing is really needs to have infrastructure in place. We talked about 30 and 35. Right there at 30 and 35, there is no infrastructure. It could be extended. But that's one of the big things. So working with the city of Knox and others to try and get this feasibility study in place so that we can move forward. Had an investor here from Wyndham who tried to buy out the fellow that owns the hotel. We thought gave him a great offer. He said absolutely not. He said he would have his hotel up and running, ready to go by September 7th. Nothing is happening. And that's one of the big things we hear from our industry folks, is they don't have places for people to stay when they have partners come in to town. They don't have places if they're bringing potential employees in to interview, things like that. There's no place for them to stay. They can find an Airbnb or a verbo rental, but you're not going to find storefront accommodations. And that is something, every time Lisa pulls them, that's something that they say, we want a hotel. We need nice restaurants. So it does feed into what we do to try to bring those kind of amenities to town as well. I mean, just for instance, two companies fly people into the Stark County Airport, and then they have to turn around and send them to Swan Lake or to Balbo. Aladdin. So we need something that's nice, that's clean. And I mean, with all the things going on around here, between industry, between our recreational amenities, between all the softball tournaments, baseball tournaments in the park from the weekends and the summer. We just need something close to home. That's nice. So working on that. We also provided a letter of support to the, regarding the American Discovery Trail, which would add uniform signage along the entire route. We were advised that Senator Brown is the co-lead sponsor for the Senate bill. Toto mural project is complete. We were the fiscal agent for that grant. We're very excited about the possibility of another mural in North Judson. That would be for North Judson, one in St. Pierre, one in Toto, as well as three in Knox, and the possibility of another one here. We'd like to promote a mural trail, and this is something that also through the CBC and the tourism piece would be a fantastic thing to promote in Stark County. Bring more people in and get people who live here out and exploring the county, see what is there. And just really, I don't know if you've been to Rinse Lear lately, but downtown Rinse Lear is all murals, and it's wonderful. It's just, it really reflects nicely on the community. One thing, a couple of weeks ago, we submitted a closing the gap, closing the gap grant with the assistance of local childcare providers and the Stark County Community Foundation. That grant is $350,000 to bring additional state licensed childcare opportunities to Stark County and Knox, North Judson specifically. SCEDF will be the fiscal agent for the grant and will receive a nominal administrative fee. Again, childcare is a huge piece of economic development. We got support letters from local industry saying, if we had daycare here, our, our folks would come to work and would have a place to take their kids. Knox specifically does not even have a licensed daycare center. So that's another piece that we are, we feel like is a big part of economic development. So we offered to be that fiscal agent for this grant opportunity. Okay, last thing, Stark Tank. Okay. I'm gonna let Mary talk to Stark Tank because she's rocking and rolling on that. Well, first of all, thank you to the commissioners and council for giving us our jumpstart with the funding for that. We've already more than doubled the amount of money we gave us with more sponsorships pledged and coming in. If anyone would like to sponsor Stark Tank, I'll be happy to tell you how you can do that. We're very excited. It is a county-wide event this year, or in the past two years, it's been North Judson only. That was at the direction of our board, because as pointed out, there are two of us, and we can't pull off three events of that size. So we're folding it all together. I have had quite a few inquiries from people wanting to participate. Have two confirmed participants so far, but still a few weeks to get those applications in. And it's human nature to wait until the last minute to submit those. So we will be scheduling next the meetings with the SBDC advisor, probably via Zoom, to do the free coaching and presentation assistance for those competitors. We're learning. Last year was the first in-person event we did, and we did just a quick run-through. A couple hours before the event, my nerves were shot. We're doing a run-through the morning of this time to make sure everyone's slide decks and presentation materials work, that they are comfortable with where they're going, that they are comfortable being on the stage. Then everybody go and come back in the evening. So that's something we're doing this year. We're really excited about it. The video that we are producing, the Live Here, Work Here, Play Here video, will premiere at Stark Tank. And we just, we think it's going to be a really great event. It's gotten a lot of media coverage from not just local, but regional as well. Northwest Indiana Times, Northwest Indiana Business Magazine, Inside Indiana Business, ABC 57, the regional news out of La Crosse has covered it. It's just, it's a great showing for Stark County. And it's interesting when Lisa and I go to things out of the community, people will say, oh, Stark Tank. Yes, Stark Tank, but it catches us a little bit by surprise. So we're really excited to see that grow and looking forward to having a really good event to make you and the rest of the county proud on September 17. It will be at 6 o'clock at North Judson-St. Pierre High School. The intent, now that it is county-wide, is to rotate among the schools in subsequent years. We had already reserved North Judson when the decision was made to do it as a county-wide event. So hope to see you all there. There will be door prizes. And happy to answer any questions you might have about that event. And thank you again for your support.
Do you, are you still talking with any broadband providers?
We check in with SURF about once a month. And it seems like things are moving slowly now. We know that the infrastructure that was going into the west end of the industrial park was delayed a little bit because of supplies that they needed for that. We do expect that infrastructure to be in this fall, or early in the fall. So I, I feel like once that's done, we can start ramping up a little bit more to, because I know the city of Knox and the town of North Judson, they want to get the infrastructure through, so we can at least start building out.
I only ask because I got a note, a note, more of a press release from the Lieutenant Governor's Office about the Indiana Connectivity Program is already granting funds.
Okay, sure. I will take that. And we know that the internet service providers seem to be the ones who they're targeting most to try and get these grants for the county governments. So we are happy to work with the county governments and the internet service providers to do anything we can to help secure funds for broadband. But again, it's, it's a huge thing. And until we get something a little faster, my internet was out this morning. I was up at 4:00 because I needed to do some things at home. And I had no sun really this morning. So yeah, it's, it's definitely on our radar, and we will do whatever we can to, to assist to keep that moving. All right. Thank you.
This morning, one is moving my personal office from in the center where it is we hold the election equipment. I think that's gonna have to be a must, simply because our voting equipment, as you may know, it's the Secretary of State has decided that all DRE machines must have a verifiable, verifiable paper audit trail with the machines. So that means that BB pads are here to stay. We have to keep them. And I have to get one for every one of my machines, which thankfully the state is paying for. We don't have to pay for them. I have 20, we have 46 machines. That means it's still need 26. $1,800 a pop for, for the BB pad. That's not including all the cords and cables and the paper and everything that goes with it. So I'm very glad that the state is paying for all of these. But with these come new cases for our micro vote machine, because right now the machines in one case, the BB pad is in another case. And the way that it stands on the voting equipment on the stand is not real safe. So they're implementing a new case with the voting machine and the BB pad all together in one. So our cases right now are 21 inches wide, 24 inches tall, and 5 inches wide, weighs 21 pounds. The new ones that are going to be coming in are 24 inches wide, 48 inches long, 7 inches wide, and 56 pounds. So they're more than doubling the size. That whole room is stuffed the way it is with everything that we have, with the printers, the eagle hooks. What the 20 BB pads that we do have, and of course, all the PPE. And I'm afraid that PPE is not going to go away when it comes to elections ever again. So I have that stuff to store too still. So it's just an idea that I'm throwing around in my brain to, because you have to get to these machines. And pulling them out, we can only, the new machines, we can only stack five high, four high, because of the weight of them. So I don't know how we can get in all this equipment in this room. Where they're at now, along with everything else that we have in there, and be able to pull them out, program them when we need to program, update them when we need to update them, change the paper in the BB pad rolls when we're doing all of this. We just have to have room to work with the machines. So that's why I'm thinking to swapping my office and putting the equipment in where I'm at right now. It's just a thought right now. I'm trying to figure out the best way to handle all this equipment that we're going to be getting in with the amount of weight. The new ones do have wheels on them, thankfully, so we don't have to worry about somebody picking it up and carrying it. They'll have wheels on it, and the legs are on the exterior of them. So when we go around and deliver these equipment, the poll workers will have to worry about standing up the machines that the young men that I have delivering the equipment will be able to stand them up. The way it is right now, they can only deliver them because the legs are stored inside, and we cannot break the seals on the machines until election morning. So they can't set them up right now, and with the legs being on the outside of the machines, then they'll be able to set them up. And you won't have to worry about poll workers hurting themselves before they tried to pick up the young men themselves. So that's one good thing. I don't know how many of you have been up to my attic lately. I know I kind of hijacked a councilman, and he went up to the attic with me to take a look around. It definitely needs to be cleaned. I think he saw that from himself. We have recorders, materials in there, auditors, materials in there, assessors, even EMS. Of course, the courts have boxes up there. CASA has stuff up there. I have stuff up there. But, you know, it needs to be cleaned out. There's stuff from the EMS from the 80s. And I'm not real sure why it's up there or why we're still keeping it when we can, you know, destroy stuff. We have a retention schedule that we all need to go by. And I'm, I'm almost positive that these other departments don't even know that they have some stuff up there. But that really needs to be addressed, and we need to get that cleaned up and organized. So we, at least we know whether it's up there instead of not being able to move around and not have any fluids up there. And you guys may know that scanning project, a large project, is getting ready to start with my office. The first quote I got from Fiddler was for $176,000. I got a quote from SB Portals about two years ago now for $198,000. Of course, as soon as I got the, it's from SB Portals, I stopped because there's no way we could do that. Well, Fiddlers went from 176, I was awarded with $50,000 to start the scanning project in. There's a couple of ways we can do this. I can get almost everything scanned that I can't scan myself with that money and get the first three years of access to Bastion and to Apex for indexing. If I keep all the indexing in-house and have my girls do it, every image that they index or touch is going to cost us a dollar if somebody else does it, or if Fiddler does it. In talking to Fiddler, and they will be training us on how to do this. Once we get good at it, we can index anywhere from 60 to 75 items per hour. So that's $65 to $75 an hour that we would pay somebody else for keeping it in-house to do. We would pay somebody else for keeping it in-house to do. Uh, in front of you is the old and the new. Um, on the second page of the new, it's highlighted items. That says specifically to um, save money. Use the fifty thousand dollars to the fullest extent and have them scan everything that I do not have accessibility to scan. So are, have you guys seen our large marriage books and our large record books? It won't fit in a eight by even fourteen scanner. So I don't have the capabilities of scanning those in-house. And um, a cheaper way to do this is send them offsite and I have a very big problem with taking, letting somebody take my records offsite. Um, the items that are going to be scanned right now are all being scanned in-house. I do not want anybody in Michigan having my items when I need them to work with them. You know, right here. So uh, the highlighted areas will be um, added to. The job description. And uh, when she, I have no doubt in my mind that uh, she will at least be able to do sixty of them per hour when we get indexing. And I think the money savings that she could do is well worth the, the uh. Benefits of adding her as well as uh. You all know that we had an employee quit a few months back, uh, right before the primary. And uh, the person I filled that position with had already worked in my office. Um, but that position was held by the courts. Um, Tony was in my office for the last three and a half years. She's been in my office all but two weeks because we don't hold trials anymore. So I've grown accustomed to having that position in my office all the time. And I do not believe the courts plan on fulfilling uh, that position anymore, at least downstairs in my office. I think they. The person that they hire will remain upstairs. So that means I'm already gonna be a short, a person in my office anyway. Which is, it never came out of my budget. She was considered the liaison between the courts and the clerk's office. But the court paid her salary a hundred percent, but she was down in my office working for me except for jury calls. So I'm already gonna be down the.
So you're, you're not expecting to have a court liaison in your office going forward? What? Positions are you, do you, are you going or planning to have outside of this election?
This is it. And the girls that I have now, I do not want any other positions.
What do you, what, what, what are the positions you've got now? Just so I can list them out and visualize your org chart.
You wanted, I have two girls on the east side.
Yeah, and they titles.
Uh, bookkeeper Lori is my bookkeeper. Shelby is my first deputy as well as the criminal.
And then on the other side.
I have Tiffany and Tony. Uh, Tiffany is our main child support personnel and Tony is uh, mostly civil.
Civil filings?
And then we have the one desk that's in the middle of the room that is, will probably forever be in, because I do not see.
So you're, when everything's said and done, you're only gonna need five people in your office?
But the election person being six.
You only listed about four people in addition to the election just now. Bookkeeper, deputy, child support and civil filings. Where's the fifth?
The election board. That's it.
You just mean, okay, five people under you. Alright.
Well, we have the part-time, if you want those.
Okay.
I have one part-time that works Monday, Thursday, Friday, and one that works Tuesday, Wednesday. The Tuesday, Wednesday was more for election help, helping me, especially in voter registration, going through voter registration. So that position could be eliminated. In my already budget. Is using her for elections and paying her out of elections because we did not have an election person for the last two years. Any other questions? Do you want clarification on that? It's not anything else?
So you're asking for your part-time, you mentioned the full-time.
You and I started getting a little cloudy on this. We're here for a budget workshop. We actually talked about this, the budget workshop. We actually spoke about how this person would do other things like it would save so much money in all that scanning. And uh, so we had already like talked about this, mentioning it, but. I have to admit, Bernard, that I'm a little fuzzy now too with all that extra information, but um, to the point, it was just making that and then weren't you reducing the full-time or part-time also too then? By making this person full-time, weren't you eliminating a part-time also?
A part-time person will become.
Right, but I mean, what I'm saying.
According to what I just heard, instead of two part-timers in her office, she'll have one. And she'll have a full-time, now she'll have a full-time election clerk, a clerk in addition to the four positions she already has working in her office.
Which I'm used to having five people working in my office. So. We'll be doing the same amount of work plus more with the scanning project and indexing. Because I think a dollar an image for a company to uh, index items for me is a little high, but that's going great, I guess. So. That's what they get. And if we can do sixty documents an hour in my office now, you know, my girls have other work to do too. But uh, if we can. Get some of that done, it would be a big benefit and a huge cost savings.
I'll make the motion to eliminate the part-time election clerk and create the. Full-time election clerk and approve the corresponding job description. Effective January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Whatever. Yeah, that one. Sorry, I'm still foggy from the last presentation.
We had a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Pairing up for the general election.
No, as far as um, moving you around, is that something you do without the remodel to your office?
Um, well, of course, we all want remodels. Um, we have a high, most highly. Visibly office in the courthouse and we're the most protected office in the courthouse. Uh, we still have window air conditioners, which means the outside of the courthouse look worse than what it should. Um, you, you know, the girls have been begging for years for new paint. We got sponge paint on our walls. And you know, it's not real attractive to go in there. Our carpets have big runs and I. Know the girls complain about allergies all the time and having forty, fifty-year-old carpet on the floor doesn't help matters at all either. So. You know, we're not asking for a redet and a total redo. Uh, painting hardwood floors would go a long way. But uh, having an HVAC system so we can get rid of the air conditioners would most definitely be ideal.
Yeah, because it's one of the things I was hoping and we could continue discussions with Arba funds. Especially when it comes to heating and cooling on that second floor. You know, that's, that is an issue that needs to be addressed.
You know, my girls on the east wing was calling Mr. Gorley this last winter. Because the whole air that was blowing in and it's, and it was no different this year than it was in previous years, but I. Evidently, they had their fill of it and was calling in complaining, which I can't stop them from calling in complaining. Uh, and of course, I hear it every day during the winter, the whole air coming in around the, the air conditioners, which, okay, it does, but.
And that was, and that was part of what this was. I've already started exploring options. This was. Proposal to start looking into things. I know, um, we don't, I don't expect a decision, but it's something. I wanted to make sure both of you guys were aware of that I was looking, looking at. I wish you guys might.
Contacted. There was a email that was sent to me from the Attorney General. About some funding options, but unfortunately those funding options do not go to uh, government home buildings. It's historical buildings, not government home buildings. So, but I tried to go to that avenue and it was shut down, so.
About the scanning, um, Bill has always been real friendly about, he's mentioned sort of a larger documents. Bill has a special scanner that we approved. In, in fact, his whole thing about it was that he would, he'd work with other departments with it. So we own a scanner that can scan what you want to do.
The large book pages?
Yeah, Bill Kreis can do that. And he's always happy to help with that and offer the use of it.
Hi, next table. The only problem with that is some of our books are bound. They can't go through a scanner. You have to completely unbind them. Some of our books open up and you can pull pages out like that, but.
Yeah, some of the books are.
Right, but I mean, what would be the alternative? I mean, if you want to scan it, that's how you have to do it. Are you saying there's another way to lay it and scan it?
That's why the books, my large books are getting done first before anything else because I don't have good access to. Have books scanned when my books are found and the pages are not.
I figured if you guys better mention it, if you wanna take action on it later.
Is appropriation by the council has to be spent that year?
Maybe start at least get more painted and stuff.
Hardwood floors would go a long ways with my girls. My girls are kind of getting discouraged. It's not something I want to. Talk about right here in the meeting. I'll talk to each one of you one-on-one, but uh, they are getting a little discouraged and uh.
Uh, Jim, you just go a little bit for some fixing over there.
Glass in my house, we don't have any more broken glass things in my office, which.
Thank you, guys.
We're having issues with uh. Pardon, it's just like it's on top of the jail. Uh, the unit itself was only made for two years. It's from China, so it's about nine foot long and it's been leaking oil in the roof. And uh, waiting for a board to come in that runs middle of the jail. This also is a part is out of China too. The um, the back of the jail with the inmates is working, but it's um, they run tandem with the other one that's giving us problems. So. That one is bogging the other one down and uh, we have to maintain the jail at certain degrees or certain degree. That doesn't enough. Of course, we face legal obligations. Um, we had a local business come out and give us a quote for eight to ten thousand dollars that we fix it.
I mean, it's just, where's the, what fund are we going with?
I think the council has suggested Q cap.
Yeah, I suggested Q cap for that. I mean, we've got a lot of stuff out of jail seat in already. I mean, that would make the, that'd be the other thing that makes sense, but Q cap, you, you've hardly spent any of it. I haven't seen that. You're comfortable with it?
The motion approved is requested. Funds repairs it.
Is that up to ten thousand?
Including the dollar amount he just said.
He said eight to ten.
Yeah.
So up to ten thousand. Right, that's what I'm saying, up to ten thousand. You want to say up to eight? No, I'm trying to give you the upper number.
Yeah, we'll take the upper one.
Hey, at least you remembered to put you on that one.
Well, you know, the, the jail is still technically new, but you know, it's seven and a half years old now and it's constantly. Everything's running nonstop. So we're gonna run into that phase now where things are going to just flat out wear out.
Is the new unit gonna be from China too, Bill, or is it gonna be a new, hopefully a better brand?
I hope not. Um, and, and I'm not, you know, just, you know, discouraging whatever happened before, but. I think now that we're actually there and have been there for a while, we're finding out that some of the parts that they sold us. Or some of the stuff that they sold, door handles and all that stuff, just simply weren't great what we thought they were.
Well, that's not our last big project. I mean, it's something for us to note when we start working with future vendors and you know, for, you know, for the project management side of it.
And when we bought, you know, when we was doing destruction, we never, I don't think we were told that, that unit was only made for two years.
It's unbelievable.
You know, we ran into issues with our um, doors too, door locks and all that stuff. It's, it's a mess. But anyway, that's, that's where we're at. Alright, thank you.
Okay, so the quote came in quite high, which we. Uh, we're gonna go with the base bid for Reeve Riley at one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. They had the lowest base bid.
What was that number again?
One million, one hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-five cents.
That's just for the base bid?
That was just for the base bid. They had the lowest overall bid as well. This came in at twelve percent higher than what we expected. So it's a hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars higher than what we expected.
Make motion to approve the base bid from Reeve Riley.
Say, all those in favor?
All right.
We should approve the payroll claims to the amount of hundred and eight, two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second. All right.
The vendor claims in the amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
So
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, July sixth, twenty-twenty-two?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Make a motion to approve the presented request for annex keys. Favorite time? You weren't here when this was brought up. I don't know if we need to talk about it anymore because it's more of a council action anyway, but um and it's pretty thorough policy. I don't know why the vague concern was brought up again. Dave's already left, so I don't think there's any action we need to take.
That's it. Yeah, then I just wrote, I bring it up to the county council to set up elected officials. We have, I've been receiving through some of your elected officials a letter of quest for public documents, Freedom of Information Act requests, which are fine. Um, I would just encourage elected officials, I know the sheriff's reached out to me a couple of times. Yeah, some of these one-A auditors and other people, if you get these requests via email, sometimes they're from actual emails, sometimes they're officiantims. I encourage our elected officials to either send them to me because there's forms I want people to fill out when they make those requests. Um, which do a couple of things. It allows me to be able to tailor my response. Sometimes what they're requesting is confidential. We can't disclose, but you know, something besides just a big email from somebody saying, hey, I want this, this, and this, classify this as an FOIA request. It's not good enough, you know, I, so I've developed a form again, I can get the sheriff to do one, because I know he's had a couple of them now. And another one, your elected officials reach out to me, forward it to me, or you, or you know, I'll just, I can send the form out to all of you elected officials. They say they have, they itemize what they want, because then it gives me a concrete timeline what they're asking for, and I can kind of parcel through what I can disclose, what we can disclose, what we can't. So I'll, I'll repeat it, the county council, but since I've probably had half a dozen, now if your elected officials reach out and say, hey, the question is, this document, be an email.
And this only pertains to the elected officials and not the appointed department heads?
No, it would, it pertained to any, anybody that works in any department. It's true, the elected official, it's just their staff. That the audit will perform specifically for start counting to be able to handle people.
But um also needs to be uh sent to the department heads that directly report to us.
Yes, yes.
How they got?
Have you guys signed the contract for the version inspection? Is that going through email yet?
Looks like.
It went all the way through.
It went all the way through. You finished your circuit?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Anyone else have any comments?
I'm here on, on the behalf of county department board, and as you know, Cameron Cappas designed this super ten. I didn't ask my big maller to come here and see if the commission would um address the policy temporarily on the use of cell phones by part-time employees. Uh, that cellphone is now being carried, well, would be carried, I think you got it right now, would be carried by tangency, that's in the office who would be getting calls on their uh reservations of Bastion. And we're losing gravity right now by not being able to do that. So we can get consideration to change that policy temporarily for until we hire a new superintendent, which we've got like seven or eight advocates right now.
Whether it was something you had already discussed as far as a special situation for the vehicle. And this should be no different than that, I would think.
Well, yeah, it just has to be approved by
Yeah, maybe. I would say it so long to be same like second or however.
Until they hire a superintendent.
Second.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anyone else have anything for us?
We have so many questions about the scanning project, well, I know I sent you an email.
No. Your email made it seem like it was gonna work the same as it worked before. There were no issues before, correct?
Yeah.
So and yeah, I think it's safe to assume that it will run just as smoothly as you so
Let's hope so. The same person that managed it last time is managing it, will be here managing it this time.